To tonight's school committee meeting, tonight's meeting will be held remotely Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions to the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the-
Did we lose his audio?
I believe we did lose his audio, yes.
The meeting is being video and audio recorded for future broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Shane Martin and Michael Cassidy. Thank you. I'd like to move on to the approval of the minutes, payroll, and warrants. Is it possible to get a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes for March 2nd, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
I'll do a roll call. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
And Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Thank you. Could I get an approval for the public budget hearing minutes of March 10th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
And Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I get approval of school committee meetings of March 16th, 2021?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
And Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the payroll and warrants?
Go for it, somebody.
Motion, don't move.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
And Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get into the superintendent's report, Kelly, do you know if there's anybody waiting that has any comments?
Mr. Oliver, do you see anybody in the waiting room?
I do not see anyone in the waiting room at this time.
Thank you.
For our last discussion, I'm sorry, Mrs. Sumner, for our last discussion, we keep an delegation open through the end of the meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks.
As far as new business, we're gonna move right to Dr. Bailey's superintendent report?
Are we doing the school choice hearing?
So we have a school choice hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm missing that one.
Right before delegation card number three.
Oh, I got it. Okay.
So we'll need a motion to suspend the rules of the open meeting session and enter into the school choice hearing.
Okay. Could we get a motion to-
I'll make a motion to suspend the school committee meeting and move to the school committee, excuse me, the school choice hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, sorry about that. Next, we're gonna go into new business with the superintendent's report with Paula Bailey.
So we have to have the school choice hearing, and in the packet, I had recommended not to accept school choice pupils from other districts, and that just goes along with what we've been going on, what we've been doing for many years. But if the committee wants to have a discussion about that, that's fine. But there does need to be a vote, an official vote, on school choice.
Paula, do we make it to suspend school choice? Is that the motion to make?
Let me say-
Or Kelly, somebody?
Do not to participate in the school choice for the 2021-22 school year.
I'll make a motion not to participate.
All right. I think first, we need to, if there isn't any discussion, then we need to make a motion to end the school choice hearing and enter back into open meeting.
Yep.
So are we going to make the motion to not participate and then exit the hearing?
So you're gonna make a motion to end the school choice hearing and enter back into open meeting, and then when we're open meeting, you're gonna make a motion to not participate in the school choice?
Okay.
That's how we did it in the past.
I'll make a motion to end the school choice hearing and re-enter into public meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
So now we would vote or make a motion on the-
Could I get a motion not to participate in the school choice 2021 and 2022 school year?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
And Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we good for new business now?
I believe so.
Okay, we're gonna move into-
I will start my report, if that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
All right. So under personnel matters, there are no changes since last month. I wanted to give an update. I know that, you know, some people have asked questions about the playground and the basketball courts, and I know we have little toy update, but I think it's more of an update for all the playgrounds and the basketball courts of where we are at. And, you know, we were following the guidelines, the CDC guidelines, we had them closed. Now that we're back in person, we really focused on getting the kids back in person. But I did meet with Mr. Johnson at the elementary school, and he basically is trying to work out a plan, talking to his teachers, about sanitizing the equipment in between uses and how that can work. So I asked him for a timeline on when he feels that that could happen, so that we could open. We did open up the playgrounds after school, but they're not open yet during the day. He feels that something possibly could be done for next week. And I believe with the basketball courts, and Mrs. Flynn, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we ordered a new backboard and net for one of them, and I think one of them was put up?
We put one back up, one hoop, and, you know, a net and rim back up, just to tide us over until we ordered two new backboards, nets, and rims. So those are on order. Soon as those come in, we'll put those back up. But in the interim, we, probably about a week and a half ago, we put one back up, so that there would be something.
So I'm not sure if there's any other discussion.
Yeah. So Paula, the reason why it has to be disinfected in between, that's a DESI guideline, is that correct, for both apparatuses, big toy and little toy?
Yes. And we don't have the custodial staff right now to do that. So Mr. Johnson is trying to figure out how we can open it safely, get it disinfected, and work with his staff on that. So he's supposed to give me an update. He's hopeful that by next week, it could possibly be open if everything works out the way he feels it will. But he's gotta talk to the staff to work out some of those details still.
Just to clarify, that's not like, so in between uses doesn't mean one kid goes down the slide, then you sanitize, and then another kid can go down the-
No.
So what does that mean? Does that mean in between-
Probably kids-
Grade groups, or?
Yeah. So when the recess happens, the kids utilize the big toy, then they come off, and then it gets sanitized before the next group of kids, you know, goes on at night or morning. You know, they're trying to work out those very specific details with supervision and mask wearing and making sure that the kids are still socially distanced while on that.
But after school, Dr. Bailey, it's kind of just open to everybody, right?
Right. That's right.
So there is no town or CDC guidelines about this. This is strictly what DESI is saying. And it's still, Paula, and correct me if I'm wrong, up to the towns to make those decisions, because we do know that there are other towns in our area that don't have these requirements for playgrounds. So we're just trying to be extra cautious, correct?
So it's up to the operations of the school, and just to make sure that we can safely get it sanitized as what's recommended. We've been following the guidelines all along. But we also have realized that we're trying to open things back up as we've gotten the kids back. We'd like the kids to be able to use the equipment safely. So the goal is to get those structures open.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions on that? Okay. The next thing is a superintendent's evaluation. And I feel good about this, because I try to give updates during every school committee meeting. So it's not like you're just hearing from me at the end of the school year about things that we're doing. You basically hear updates at every meeting. But I want to go over the process. So if you look in your packet, I had sent you a memo, which I had outlined all of my goals, which I believe I met, which I'm gonna go over those goals today. And then I'm gonna talk about the process of the evaluation of what has been agreed to. So on the educator goals template sheet, which is the same sheet that I used in January when I gave you a middle-of-the-year update, this has just been updated for the end-of-the-year update. So the first goal that I have is to promote ongoing student achievement by ensuring all Acushnet public school students have equitable opportunities to engage in uninterrupted learning experiences. And, you know, I'm proud to say that even during a pandemic, our teaching staff has been very focused on the curriculum and moving kids forward. We tried to have as many kids in our buildings in person as possible, that we could possibly fit according to the guidelines. So we had K and 1 students here four days a week, because we thought, again, they would be more successful. So if you go under that one to the end-of-the-year update, I've outlined all of the updates in terms of what has been done. We continue to look at recommendations from that curriculum audit. We're doing many curriculum pilots right now with the goal, as we've gotten in our budget, with the goal of bringing on more curriculum that's rigorous and rated green, highly rated, research-based curriculum into our schools, because we have not had many adoptions at all over the years. So we're trying to get back on track with that. We've had teachers volunteer to participate, to be on those pilot teams, and our director of curriculum and the principals have been meeting with them to get ongoing feedback regarding the curriculum. You can see that there's a whole host of things that we've tried this year, Envision, Light Sales, Success Maker, Student Learning Guides, had to be different than your typical lesson plans, because we really did learn from the spring that families were more involved with the remote learning, and they really didn't understand what was going on. So we tried to make it more family-friendly in terms of what is the objective of the lesson. And we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on those student learning guides. We also made individual teacher websites for every single teacher, that they were able to update with their lessons. So these were like very big things, like I said, during a pandemic. And this just brought us a lot of consistency across the district as we continue to engage in higher-order thinking for our students. And, you know, we've gone through that blended learning model all year, as you know. Our math educators are really working hard with our director of curriculum on a vision and goals for the district math program. And you know, we've done some work in that area in the past couple of years by adding algebra with grade eight. We continue to do learning walks in our schools, so that we can see what the trends are in each school. And then we try to give growth-producing feedback to the principals, so that they can continue to work and give feedback to the teachers. But it just aligns all of the evaluators and the administrators in terms of what they're looking at. I have one-to-one meetings with all district administrators, including the building principals. And as you know, I participate, I'm in my third year of the NSIP program. And we have a huge focus, a very strong focus, on building successful academic programs. We have the Google platforms that have been created, and those continue to be enhanced for families and students. And, you know, over the April break, we just, again, upgraded our technology with all the touch panels. I believe 20 more were installed over the break. So, again, giving teachers the tools that they need to help our students. We know that as curriculum is being adopted, we need to continue to work on curriculum apps and common assessments and update those according to the new curriculum. We monitor progress with DIBELS, Galileo Benchmarks, and Success Maker, as well as curriculum unit assessments. And we also, this year, we've tried to build a bench here with our teacher leadership. So we have had some administrative apprenticeships happen, where people are trying to now get their certifications in administration. And when I came on, I don't believe there was anyone in the district who was certified as a director, supervisor, principals that, you know, weren't in those jobs. And now we're starting to see the interest, which is great. So we're really trying to build a bench in Acushnet. You know, our instruction continues to focus on tier one this year, especially during the pandemic. And that's that core instruction in the classroom. And we're also purchasing a reading intervention program, which is Amplify Intervention, as well as DIBELS that will now be digital online for use for those tier-three students, those students that have to go out for extra help. We hired a new curriculum director in March, as you know, and we continue to work collaboratively on those plans. And as you know, we return to full in-person learning. And I will tell you that, you know, kids who may have a COVID-related issue, they're still able to access the curriculum by dialing in to the classroom with all of the technology that we've put in with the cameras. And the teachers are doing it seamlessly. I was just in a classroom this morning, and it's like, I was in a couple of classrooms that had students at home, and the, it's seamless. The kids are participating. It's like they're sitting in class, but they're at home. So that's been extremely positive. Does anybody have any questions about the student learning goal that I just reviewed? Okay, the next one, I'm gonna go over the professional practice goal, which is goal number two, which is all about the NSIP program. So there's not a lot of changes since the last time I updated you, except I would say the major changes, you'll see there's a lot of professional development that's provided through MASSS, and I've listed those all, everything that I've attended. And I'm able to, you know, really, you know, access these trainings and then bring it back to the district as needed. And actually, next Thursday is my last official NSIP full meeting. And I think there's some sort of an official graduation. But just to let you know, they did put out the option to the last three cohorts of superintendents for a small fee next year to continue working on problems of practice together and collaborating. So I was very interested in that, because I do find this helpful. So I will still have my sort of foot in the door, if you will, and consistent access to the networking that goes on with NSIP, which is great. And so there's really not, let's see, too many things that are different with NSIP. We have a goal of making a very formal capital improvement plan by the fall, but we've met with the capital improvement team. And I know that Kristen, Mrs. Flynn's gonna go over some of those purchases and things that, in her report, so I don't want to really get repetitive. But in terms of NSIP and my goal for number two, does anybody have any questions? I participate twice a month, and it's been super helpful. Goal number three, to develop and implement resources that support thriving social and emotional learning experience for all students within the Acushnet public schools. I will say that the clinical team continues to be very strong in Acushnet. They've really embraced the idea of two schools, one district. And I find that whatever is needed in each school, they are right there for each other. So I've seen a nice difference with that in terms of the two schools, one district. But they continue with district-wide research-based model of safe and supportive classroom and school environments that promote positive social and emotional environments. They're continuing with the implementation of responsive classroom or and/or PBIIS. You see a lot of things that are still going on. Things might look differently in terms of how they present to the kids. I know earlier on in the year, a lot was done virtually. But now we're seeing more things done right in the classroom, which is great. There's been wellness and bullying prevention committee meetings. Ensure that all SEL resources and trainings are aligned to the district's model of safe and supportive classrooms and schools. We're continuing to collect data for our tiered model of social and emotional support that builds student social and emotional competencies of those students who have been identified for needing supports. So again, that clinical team, they're working with the teachers to identify those students and giving them the supports that they need. Principals will deliver consistent and effective feedback and support for educators as they establish these safe and supportive environments, strengthen the social and emotional building-based teams. Guidance will create and implement a district attendance campaign. And again, that one, because of COVID, we know that we've had to alter a bit, because we had kids working from home. But anyone that we saw who needed support in terms of attending school, it was addressed. You see who's included on our district-wide clinical team, which is the school adjustment counselor, guidance, school psychologist, OT for any sensory or dysregulation issues, and our speech therapist, especially as it pertains to social pragmatic issues in our BCBA. Coordinated clinical support between the two schools, which I've already touched on, guidance, and school adjustment counselors will strengthen in-class supports and curriculum at each grade level, and restructure social skills, life skills groups. So basically, that's all been outlined. And you can see, we've also listed all of our partners with our community agencies who work with us on these SEL issues, New Bedford Child and Family, the Children's Advocacy Center, and others. You know, this week, we had a death, unfortunately, the unfortunate death of a teacher who passed. And we had our clinical team, including Child and Family, that not only worked within our district, but we had them ready to go at Fairhaven High School and all of the high schools for any student who needed that support. So, you know, we try to plan ahead as much as we can. Does anybody have any questions about goal three? Goal four, to continue to provide a safe and healthy learning environment that prioritizes every Acushnet public schools' community member during a global health pandemic. So, you know, from the beginning of the year, all of our staff and students had appropriate PPE, including face coverings. We've had signage put throughout the buildings and offices as a visual reminder for all to follow those regulations. Plexiglas had been ordered and installed in all the office areas and wherever someone thought it was needed. Our school nurses also had additional PPE to, and isolation rooms, we had to build, in some cases, a specific isolation room at each school. One was modified, one was totally new. We placed a large tent that was rented outside of our school in the back for mask breaks, especially during inclement weather. We've had a strict cleaning protocol, which we did that deep clean on Wednesdays. And now that that's not needed anymore, we're still making sure that our schools are cleaned appropriately during this time. We're still not out of this yet. We've had lots of training on Wednesdays, and specifically, not only just on curriculum issues, but on COVID guidance, because as you know, the guidance has continued to change all year. So we had to continuously update people on the guidance. I've had at least weekly, sometimes twice a week, trainings and meetings during this pandemic, not only with the commissioner of education, other health and state officials, doctors advising us on these calls. And our district physician continues to be updated. I continue to meet regularly with the ATA president, as well as surveying staff throughout the pandemic to check in, to see how everyone is feeling. We formed and created a CCR COVID crisis response team to discuss scenarios, so that we could be ready. And that included people from the community, people internally, administration, nurses, fire, board of health, town administrator. I know that our school committee members have also sat in those meetings. We also have, we're on our second memorandum of agreement. We've had one already signed. We're gonna talk about the next one later today during the health pandemic. So I've worked really hard to iron out any issues that, you know, may be with our staff, to make sure that there's no change in, big changes in working conditions, et cetera. And I will say that staff has been extremely cooperative during the pandemic. They've been very understanding in the need to pivot and be flexible during this time. I find that we've worked very collaboratively with town officials. We've scheduled weekly COVID testing for all of our staff, which has been a great service for everyone. We've also organized pop-up testing clinics for our students and families as needed. Early on, when we had a lot of kids who needed testing, we were able to get them tested right away. And we repurposed two of our computer teachers to focus on supporting technology with faculty and staff and facilitating PD on Wednesdays. And they also worked with students to build their capacity during this time. And we also repurposed other specialists, as you know, because we wanted to increase our K and 1 classrooms, so that we could get all of our students in, as I mentioned a few minutes ago. Does anybody have any questions on goal four? Okay. Like I said, not different, just updated. So in your packet, I have included the superintendent and district administrator rubric, which goes through all of the standards. And then I put a hard copy of what the evaluation form looks like in your packet. It's superintendent summative evaluation report. That just shows you the hard copy. What I'm going to do after this meeting is send you the electronic form, which you would each individually, hello, Mrs. Downing, which you would each individually fill out.
I'm sorry, just want a note for the minutes, Mrs. Downing, during the meeting at 6:01 PM.
Thank you. So everyone writes an individual evaluation, but my evaluation will be reflective of the total group. So you would have two weeks to complete your individual evaluation of me, and then you would submit that to Mrs. Benavides, and she would compile it all into one evaluation. and she would compile it all into one evaluation. And Mrs. Downing would present that at the next June meeting. So I was looking at May 18th as a deadline for when you could get that back to Mrs. Benavides. Is that a fair deadline for everybody? So that she could compile that into one? Does that work for everybody, May 18th?
Yeah.
Okay. So just to go over it quickly, you do have to put a rating, because then again, they'll be collectively done. If you want to make a comment, you can certainly make a comment on each section. You don't have to. But what we typically do is all the comments will be listed at the end in one evaluation. You know, so if there's three comments on one particular section, we would list all three comments. Okay? So this form would be sent to you, you'd fill it out electronically and have that done by May 18th. Does anybody have any questions about this?
When would we receive that to start work? Did you, did you mention that?
Yep, so I wanted to wait until after the meeting tonight so that I could review with you first what it, what it is, what it looks like before I sent it out. But I could send it out tomorrow. If that works for everybody.
Dr. Bailey, I just had a general question, perhaps not related to your goals necessarily, but does, does the district have any like specific measurable goals at all in regards to whether it's test scores or getting to a level one or whatever it is? Does the district have any goals like that that we look at and adjust or try to achieve each year?
So we have a district strategy, which is the district plan overall. And I was, I updated that today, but it's a, it's a working document. And it goes along with those pillars that we had been talking about all year. The achieving academic excellence for all students, creating thriving and social, emotional learning experiences for all students, and strengthening partnerships with parents in the larger community. And then we have goals that go along with each of those pillars. And this was something that we were taught through NSIP to do more of a district strategy and then action plans around that. We have who's responsible, what the action step is, the expected dates, the status, if it's completed, in progress, not started, that type of thing. So that, that is always constantly being updated in terms of benchmarking where we're at in terms of our action plans. But we try to make sure that not only my goals are aligned to that, but the principals and then the teachers. So once I set forth my goals, the principals do their goals, the administrators work on their goals, and everything is aligned to those pillars or those strategic objectives so that everything is sort of aligned and no one's doing something totally different.
So, so you're saying like those, do the principals then have measurable goals like? So in other words, and that's related to test scores or academic, you know, achievement, meeting standards, things like that?
Yeah, so for example, I don't have theirs right in front of me, but they could have something like a certain percentage of kids on the Galileo benchmark will go from here to here. There'll be a certain percentage increase type of thing. But yes, that's how it works, and that falls under achieving academic excellence for all students. So it starts with me, then it goes to the, all the administration, and then it goes to the teachers. And then the teachers can work on team goals, they can work on individual goals. But all of those goals get approved by the supervisors, whoever's evaluating them. They get approved ahead of time at the beginning of the year. And, you know, they should be talking about them. Like when I meet with my principals or the district leadership, we try to talk about where they're at in terms of the status of, you know, where they're at, so that we're not waiting until the end of the year. And that's why with, with myself and the school committee, I try to update you at all the meetings, throughout the meetings, on what's going on in the district. But everything is related to the goals.
Yeah, I was just curious. I mean, I was looking at the rubric, I've never done this before.
Yeah, I don't know, that's fine.
And, and I was like, how do I, I, I don't, I don't know how to evaluate these things. They don't, like, so for example, those statements, like, we're going to provide these things to all students, right? I have no way of measuring that or knowing, you know, how well that's being accomplished or not, right? So I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how I do that, you know, through that rubric, if everything's just kind of, I don't know.
So what I will say is the rubric is, it's, it's thick, right? There's a lot to it. And with the teachers and with the administrators, we try to focus on certain rubric areas so that we're not all over the place in terms of what our focus areas are. But I would say if you don't know how to answer something, either don't answer it or call and ask. And I can give you examples. So, you know, equity for all students, for example, we'd want all students to make sure they have equitable access to technology. We actually went into homes this year and gave them access to Wi-Fi in some cases where students didn't have that. So things like that, but I can certainly provide you with examples of if you have specific questions as you go through. But basically, everything that I do falls under those four standards in the, in the rubric that I shared with you. You know, curriculum and instruction and operations and management, that type of thing. And you'll see some of those elements in the standards get very, very specific. So if you feel like you need more information on a certain element or on a standard, you, you have two weeks that you could contact me. You know, because nothing's really been brought up to me thus far from the committee, but I am open to whatever questions or, you know, always that you have. So, yeah, you, if you come across something that you need an answer on, please feel free.
I guess another follow-up to that would be, would it be appropriate or even practical to have or create some sort of district, you know, measurable kind of goal, or, you know, rounded in, in student achievement? Like, there, there's plenty of metrics that we could look at as a district. I mean, we cite them in, you know, in, in our budget meetings, right? Is there, so I'm just thinking outside, you know, the, the, the goals that we have here that, that are specifically tied to you. But I'm just saying as a district, should we have some sort of measurable, you know, goals for, in regards to student achievement? I don't know. I'm just, I'm thinking that we probably should, just because that's how I'm wired.
Yeah, I know. The principals do, and I know that teachers do when they look at Galileo and things like that. But we try to stay away from like one specific test, like say MCAS, right? Because it's one measure. But I know they use the Galileo benchmarks. The lower grades use DIBELS, for example, for benchmarks. So that gets pretty specific. The reason why you don't see them on my goals is because I don't get involved in the weeds of that specific testing and working with the child. What my goals reflect are things that I do have control over, right? So it starts here and then it goes down, like I said, in layers. But everything should relate to the district strategy.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I was suggesting that you would change the style of the goals. I mean, that's the way that you'd be in, you know, kind of coached to do it and every other superintendent. I, I think this would be, you know, my, my question is really kind of falling outside of that. So would be, you know, just, just from, from a district strategy rather than just, I mean, I know every teacher would have a goal, every administrator, but, you know, like as a district, where are we, where are we going, you know?
So I have a, this is called the district plan overview. And this is what I was talking about with the mission, the vision, the core values, the theory of action, the strategic objectives. It's very similar to like a school improvement plan. And like I said, it's a working document so that as we move forward and get these things done, but it's done really as a team with my team of folks to, you know, like for example, so here's a process benchmark that's listed. Ford Middle School has selected and implemented high-quality curriculum resources for math and science as a result of the curriculum audit. That's in process. As you know, we're piloting some, some things, but it's in process. We want it to get to the point where it's complete, right? So we have many, many things that we're working on and trying to figure out how to get there and.
Right, my, and, and so that's a great example. So I would say, okay, so we spent all this money on the curriculum and getting the new curriculum. Now, now let's measure how that's improved.
Right.
Outcomes. You, you see what I'm saying? I don't know.
Yes.
That's just kind of how I'm wired, I guess.
Yeah, so we have Galileo benchmarks that will happen with whatever curriculum we use. Hopefully, the idea is as we purchase new, more rigorous curriculum, that the scores will improve because they're being taught more rigorous, higher-level thinking versus tools that the teachers may have had that are not highly rated by Desi, right? So we would still use the same benchmark systems we have right now. You know, we're going to have to look at all that eventually, but right now we're focused on the curriculum.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have any questions about the process or, go ahead, Mr.?
Oh, I was just going to ask Dr. Bailey, is, so following up on John's point, is that your preferred method that if we have questions as we're working through the evaluation to try to get some clarity around that we all reach out to you individually? Or I don't know if it's even appropriate if, if we as a committee consolidated questions and had Jen bring them to you? I just want to, whatever makes sense from a committee perspective. But at the end of the day, you might be getting calls from all five of us every other day too. So just trying to understand what's kind of the best mechanically way to work through the process.
Yeah. I don't know if Mrs. Downing has any thoughts on that. I just know that we have to be careful with the open meeting law, right? So that's why we can definitely do the individually, the individual communication. But even communicating by email in a group, we can't do. So unless we post a meeting.
My recollection was when we did your last evaluation that everyone worked pretty independently, you know, worked independently on their evaluation. If they had questions or needed clarification, they went directly to you, Dr. Bailey, which could potentially open it up to many conversations, but I think that's the appropriate way to do that so we don't violate open meeting law.
Okay.
And just in terms of the normal cadence, so I think last summer when we all got together, certainly I was new and there was a lot going on with COVID and that there's still a lot going on with COVID. But in terms of the cadence of going into next year, so when would we, would we expect to see your goals for the next school year in August? Or when would we, when would we kind of be back in that cadence?
Yeah, so early on in the year, whether it's August, September, definitely then because the teachers can't do theirs and the principals can't do theirs until I do mine. Everything kind of flows in that direction. So it would definitely be one of our first meetings, whether it's August or September, depending on, you know, where we're at with the teamwork that we're doing. But it would be no different than what we've always done in the past.
And when we look at goals, setting the goals, does that, does that process essentially work the same way where we would be talking to you individually versus the committee doesn't have the opportunity to get together on its own to say, what do we think some of the goals should be? And then have that conversation with you, right? This is an individual dialogue?
I would recommend goals to the committee at a meeting, and then that's when the committee could certainly discuss. And the other thing that we could move forward in, and I don't think we've really been there yet, but the school committee could also set goals for themselves, for the school committee. So, and I know it's a newer group this year. We've had the pandemic to deal with, we've had other things going on. But yes, so when I sort of let you know where we're at, as from my perspective, that's when we would discuss that during that particular meeting. And you would approve them or not approve them or recommend to tweak them, whatever. Then we would take it from there.
Question for you, Paula, could we have, and I'm just throwing this out there as an idea, could we have an executive session with you not present, with just the committee to discuss the evaluation or no? Does that not fall under the reasons for executive session?
I'd have to look to find out.
I'm just wondering if that would be helpful to do that. I don't know.
From the beginning was that everybody would do it individually and it would be compiled. But if the committee wants to do something different moving forward, I think that next year would be the time to sort of set that up at the beginning of the year to say, you know, that you want to come together and do it more as a, a group. Do you know what I mean?
I'd love to know if it's an option. I don't, I don't see it as a bad thing if the committee were to get together to discuss the goals, you know? That could be more valuable than everybody off on, on their own, but that's my two cents.
I agree. I mean, Paula, is there like some sort of guideline that says we can't do that this time? I'm just curious.
The only, the only thing is, we had agreed to doing it the same way at the beginning. But, you know, I can certainly find out. You know?
We're not, we're not changing the format or the questions or anything. We would just be able to discuss collaboratively or, or answer our own questions maybe, so you're not inundated with a ton of questions as well. I'm just thinking that would be more.
So I guess what, what I'm hearing is we want to, we want to understand if there's any requirement that we have to proceed with the same format for evaluation that was agreed upon this year?
You don't need to proceed with the same format. Basically, you can decide every year to change it up and kind of do it differently. Now, this is the, I think this is the second or the third time that we've done it this way. But if this committee wants to do something differently, then I'm certainly open to that.
I, I think if our newer members, I mean, would, would find it helpful to go through this evaluation process together so that we could, we could, you know, have a conversation. You know, I think it, it's probably wise to complete the evaluation independently per member. But if we felt we needed a meeting together to discuss the goals and, you know, have that sort of preliminary discussion to tee up and prepare us to, to take our individual evaluations. I think we could do that, but I'm just not sure what the appropriate, whether that's done. It would have to be in an executive session, and that's what I'm not sure if that is under the umbrella of what is allowed in an executive session environment.
And that's what I was.
Just, just for clarity from my point, I, I'm thinking more about future, like next year as we.
You're thinking more goal setting.
Yeah, I was thinking more about when we set the goals for the coming school year. And, and if others want to talk about the evaluation, I'm, I'm open to that. But I'm just thinking as, as, as we set the goals for the next school year, I certainly, my two senses, it would be helpful to me as a committee to discuss what we feel those goals should be, right?
And that could certainly be done in one of our workshop settings, I would think, in a public workshop setting. And, and I really, I like that idea as well, Ron. I think that's a great suggestion. Okay, so do, do we feel the need to adjust our format for the evaluation at this time?
I don't think so. I, I think maybe we try to tackle it if we happen to run into some big issues, then then maybe we try to figure out a way to banagle an executive session at, at some point, if that's even possible. But I say, you know, for this one, we just kind of go with it.
Proceed.
Yeah, and see how things go.
Sarah, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I was just trying to help out in case other people had questions. So whatever works for everyone is fine with me.
Okay. So then I think we'll proceed as, as, as we've been doing, at least for the rest of this year. We can always reevaluate or reassess how we want to do this. And then for the goal setting, Ron, your point is well taken. We can consider doing that in a workshop such, in a workshop in the future.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you all so much. I'll let Mrs. Downing take back the agenda. All right. Thank you all so much. Um, I'll let Mrs. Downing take back the agenda.
Okay, and uh, thank you, Mr. Sumner, for opening the meeting this evening. Um, in my absence, I had a work commitment I had to be at, so apologies for being late this evening. Okay, we'll move on in our agenda and we're moving into Mrs. Flynn's report. I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, everybody. Um, so we'll just start with our budget update. Um, first of all, is the budget update. Any changes since last month? There have been some significant ones, as you can see. Our overall surplus has increased to over 600,000 and this is a result of the town applying all of the CARES reimbursements. And if you recall, on that list of all the things that we bought under the town CARES funds, they allowed us up to 350,000, which we've spent. Um, and now they've gone, the accountant's office has gone back and applied all that to our budget. So it looks like the reimbursements were one for one. So we're only waiting for um two invoices to get to the rest of the 350. And I'm confident that we're going to be very close to that because actually one of the invoices just came in. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll see that getting further up. Salary surplus has, has decreased. Um, we've had some more substitute and custodial costs as you, as you would expect. Slight increase in um out of district tuitions. Uh, we received enrollment updates with our invoices. So our tuition predictions um for high schools certainly are, are finalized because we received all of the invoices. There still could be some changes in out of district, but I don't anticipate too many since we're, you know, in the home stretch now. And we've also purchased some additional COVID facilities and um other unanticipated supplies and expenditures such as, um, we're installing, Mr. Oliver is installing uh wireless uh outside at our outdoor classrooms. Some furniture for the superintendent's office, modifications for the superintendent's office and the special education office. And I had put down concrete pad four and it should have said for the shed that's to be built for our lawn mower that we'll use to cut the new fields. But we just recently received information from the DPW that they will possibly be able to do the entire concrete project. They were going to just do the excavation, but um they may be able to do all of the concrete work. So that'll save us about $8,000. So that's some good news and certainly appreciated. You also have the budget summary update, which is just all of the larger categories like we usually report. For now, I'm gonna skip over the FY22 budget and we'll go to that at the end because I anticipate there'll be some more discussion on that. It's want to briefly go over the COVID-19 expenditures. You can see on my report, all of the funds that we've received as a result of COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic. I added a few in there that to do with school lunch. The, that total about 33, 34,000 with through the school lunch program. There's the town CARES funds and the three D E S I grants. And you have the detail of all of those expenditures in your packet and it is quite lengthy. So I do want to mention at this time, since we're, you know, pretty much fully expended on all this, that none of those expenditures that were needed to reopen schools, to continue to be open, to um allow for our students and teachers to have the Google classrooms and all of the, you know, enhanced curriculum. That wouldn't have been possible. And I want to mention Chris Oliver, the director of technology and his staff, Ken and Kathleen, Jean and Monique and Kathy, who have worked hard to bring all this technology into us. Our director of facilities, Steve Willett, is constantly um helping out um with me and the business office, looking, looking for different um items, P P E, masks, sanitizer, different ways of um of doing things. So Steve has been, you know, is very busy doing that. And certainly Jean Sheridan, our school nutrition director, who has, and her staff, who've had to reinvent their whole program this year. So I just want to mention that, that all of those things certainly couldn't be possible. I mean, they appear in my update from, from month to month, but it's certainly not um all my work. It's all of those individuals and more that have contributed to this. So while we're getting to the end of it, I just, you know, didn't want to fail to mention that. I also included some upcoming FY22 funds, um, some D E S I grants. We've talked about this briefly. We have the SR2 grant for about 305,000 and the SR3 grant, which um D E S I has advised is 2.2 times SR2. So it's roughly 670,000. So those two together add up to $976,000 that we'll be getting, that can be spent over the course of two to three to four years on, um, you know, on items, uh, same, similar activities to allowable for SR1 and SR2 for address learning loss, um, prepare the facilities and also student mental health services. So that's going to be the focus coming up. Yes, Mrs. Gomes?
None of those funds that you just mentioned can be used for salaried positions. Is that correct?
The SR funds?
Yes.
They can be.
Positions that we've requested, they can be put towards it.
We, we can, what we will do when we apply for the grants, which will be done in the next month or so, the um director of curriculum and Dr. Bailey will um put the grant application together. And after it's decided how the funds will be spent and you can certainly um write in for, for positions and salaries.
But the problem with that is, is that those only last a short amount of time. So positions are probably less likely to be filled if those grants go away. Is that correct?
Um, well, they are not funded by the local budget. They are funded by grants. There is that consideration that when the grant ends, the position may end. But there's also the consideration too with the local budget. There's never any guarantees of funding for anything, right? Um, but there is less, you know, assurance with, with the grants. But these grants, um, SR2, I believe is through 2023 and I think SR3 is through 2024. So we have some time um to, to work those funds out. I also put in a small uh update on transportation. Negotiations for the payment of FY20 last year and FY21 contracts are still ongoing. I hope that we will have some updated information for you on that, um, certainly by the next meeting, since we're coming to the end of another fiscal year. I just wanted to mention um all of the facilities and technology projects that took place. Again, these couldn't have happened without Steve Willett and his custodial staff and Chris Oliver and his technology staff. We installed the touch view panels in classrooms in Ford Middle School. We had the rug replaced in the superintendent's office suite. Like I said, modifications were made to the superintendents and special education offices. We finally replaced the laminate in the business office counter. So when you come in to sign the bills, it won't be lifting and, and be sharp. The custodians did some cleaning of rugs. Uh, we tested our sprinkler systems, generator maintenance, boiler room, heating valve replacement that I talked to you about at previous meetings. We had some bid openings and requests for quotes, which I'll get into. The kitchen grease traps were cleaned. We did some painting and wall repair, filter changes, some landscape cleanup and some electrical work on our um unit events. So upcoming projects include updating the um security camera system to um taking those analog cameras that we have left to digital, updating our phone system, updating our copier fleet. Again, what we mentioned, replacing backboards and rims on the outdoor basketball court, outdoor classroom wifi, safety inspection of the big toy and some little toy additions, which I hope will be done in the next few weeks. So some capital projects that we've talked about, the V C T tile removal and replacement. We had to get some quotes from qualified contractors to continue work that we hope to be able to do some tile work once school closes through the, through June 30th for this year's funds. We only had one, um, one vendor quote. Um, and they're actually the ones who did the carpets in the superintendent's office and we were quite happy with their work thus far. Ford Middle School evaporators and condensers replacement, because this was over 10,000, we had to get three formal written quotes advertised and it's prescribed by procurement law. Those were due April 22nd and you can see that mechanical air controls was the lowest of the two quotes we received. Um, and we are entering into a contract with them um as, as we speak. So we're hoping that that work will start and be finished by June 30th to replace those um evaporators and condensers. Big one, the Ford Middle School Gymnasium partition. Um, sealed bill bids were opened because it was over $50,000. We had to go out for sealed bid. We received three sealed bids. I opened them in public. Two of, two of the three vendors were there. The low bid was actually withdrawn several hours later. The vendor cited that he had made gross miscalculations and needed to withdraw his bid. So we went to the next low bidder who um has stated they are still interested and will do the work. So we are in the preliminary stages of that. During the course of the bid, some questions were asked about alternate safety sensors. So we added that as an alternate to give us the option to um have that installed pending what the price difference was. So we asked for an optional price. Um, and I do recommend uh that we go ahead with that. What that will do, it'll be a sensor. So say the wall is in, in the middle of closing, maybe who's ever closing it didn't notice or a child started to run across. That will pick them up and stop the wall from moving to prevent any injury. So I think the additional, um, I believe it was maybe $4,000, a 20, actually $2,500 is well worth it. So at this time, because this is a bid, um, over 50,000, I would like to ask the school committee to um vote to recommend awarding the contract to the lowest bidder who at this time is C R F Ink Interior Systems. I did check their references and I've heard um nothing but good things about their work from various school departments who have installed gymnasium walls, classroom partitions, performing arts dividers. They do work in Massachusetts and Connecticut and um actually in all, and throughout New England as well. So I have heard very good things about them. So I don't hesitate to ask you to um make a motion to award the contract to C R F Interior Systems for the gymnasium partition.
Make a motion to award the contract for the Ford Middle School Gymnasium petition to C R F Incorporated Interior Systems.
Second.
Sarah Gomes? Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tabs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just add to that, that um I will be notifying them that the, the vote has been, the contract has been awarded. We have already, they've already done some preliminary work, looking at the color of, of the vinyl and some of the um schematics that we will need to provide to our electrician to install it. So I, I am hopeful that this will be able to be done over the summer. I know I originally that first vendor that um withdrew his bed, bid expressed difficulty in completing it over the summer. But I haven't had any indication of that. So I'm, I'm hopeful that maybe this will be done over the summer. And so uh, right now, um, the funding source is our school budget, but the town administrator has indicated that she has requested um some advice from CARES to see if this is something that could be covered with town CARES. And I have not heard um yet as to whether that's possible or not. So I mentioned in my report, but this is since changed, that we were requesting quotes for the concrete pad. DPW has since informed us that they can do the work. So that's good news. And finally, um, I just wanted to mention that we have engaged with a contract cleaning service to provide cleaning and janitorial services approximately two evenings per week. As you know, we have two custodians out on long-term leaves of absence. So that in addition to the additional work that's been, you know, created with the pandemic, we really needed to have some extra work done. We advertised repeatedly since last June for substitute custodians and custodi-, temporary custodians during the pandemic and have not had luck attracting anyone. So we have um engaged with this cleaning service. So I believe they were here for the first time at the end of last week. So we will see how that goes. And finally, I mentioned um school nutrition. We, we received approximately 31,000 for food insecurity infrastructure grant. Mrs. Sheridan and her staff worked hard to purchase a lot of um supplies and materials for packaging food. I saw them yesterday, you know, just pet, they have this neat little sealer thing that you just put the baggie in and it ties the seal so that it does it much faster. Um, also they purchased a lot of rolling carts to distribute the, the food and some other packaging materials. And the last thing is that we were notified um that the U S Department of Agriculture is um continuing serving free meals to all students for next school year. So that will continue on. So I wanted to mention that to you. So the final item in my report is FY22 budget. I know we spoke about that at the workshop. Just to review for the public, um, the finance committee recommended that the school department FY22 budget be level funded. The school committee's request was approximately 394,000 over level funded. So going into town meeting, the um, the, the request on the warrant will be the finance committee's um recommendation of um level funded. So at this point, um, I will turn it over to the, the committee or and Dr. Bailey if there is further discussion on this.
Can I just explain for the public too what level funded is? Perhaps we just need to clarify that, that it's basically the same amount of money we would have for our budget this year as we had last year. And as you know, everything goes up. Salaries go up, our transportation contract goes up. So they've recommended level funded budget. So I guess I'm, I'm interested in hearing what the committee, you know, right now we have a vote on, on the table by the school committee. You know, what was it, Mrs. Flynn, 2.6% increase? We have a 2.6% increase. They're recommending 0%. So the committee needs to decide, you know, are we sticking with the 2.6? Are we making another recommendation to go to town meeting to talk about? Like I would love to just hear what your thoughts are.
I just have a question about, um, and can you remind me, um, Mrs. Flynn, were all departments level funded um across the town? Was it just the school department that was level funded? What, what's the status on, say, our police department, our fire department?
So I believe the, the town warrant, the, the budget is online. So anyone can go to the town of Acushnet's website and take a look at that. I haven't gone through it, it, in its entirety, but um at a first glance, I can say that I believe the school department was the only department, larger department, I will say, um, that was level funded.
Thank you.
Um, I did watch the finance committee meeting. Um, and if I understand correctly, um, they, they did motion to level fund us and put an additional 386,415 dollars that the town has into a general fund rather than give it to the school. So that, that, that was my understanding of the meeting that I just watched. Um, and then it was unanimous to level fund us. So with that said, what are the thoughts of the committee?
And, and Dr. Bailey, uh, to your point, right, when we talk about level funding, if salaries and other expenses are going up because it's part of contractual obligations, in essence, when you're level funded, in a way, you, you essentially experienced a decrease when we think about the you have the ability to have less resources than you've had before, right? Because some of that budget is now going to the same things or you know, contractual increases, right? So I think, you know, my two cents on this in, is, you know, we are in the midst, hopefully the tail end of, of a pandemic that has impacted all of us in many ways, but probably impacted our kids and our students more so than maybe anybody. They were out of school for a year plus. And um, I think the school's done a great job trying to provide, right, the best education and experience that we could provide during that time. But the reality is, is that these kids But the reality is, is that these kids are all behind and they're behind by a lot. And there's no other, there's no way they couldn't be behind. And so to me, when I look at this and say, as a parent, as a school committee member, as a resident of Acushnet. I want to get our kids back on track and get them back up to speed as fast as possible. And I personally want to throw as many resources at them as as is that we can, that we can manage as a town. And so to me, when I hear level funded, it just doesn't resonate well with me. Because I don't think this is the time to level fund, given those obstacles and those challenges that we have in terms of getting our kids back up to speed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hood. I I totally agree with you on that. But I also want to point out that I don't, from from the town's funds perspective, it's not a level funding. Because in regards to what the town's putting in, the the state contribution actually went up. So the state contribution went up, which meant that the town's contribution went down. So on a level funding, again, there's money that comes in from the state that specifically needs to be used for the school. And that increased year over year. So the amount that the town's contributing is actually went down.
The end result, Mr. Tebs, right, is what we already said, is that essentially, wherever the money's coming from, we ended up with a level budget. But contractual increases and other things are going to eat at that budget. And at the end of the day, our kids are the one being, who are impacted again by this.
So my my views, you know, to piggyback on what Ron and and John said. You know, between COVID happening and our kids being behind the eight ball on that. And trying to implement this new curriculum coming in. And the town having the funds, just not choosing to give them to us. You know, in my opinion, I think we need to fight for our students in our district and and request, you know, the 2.6 or however much we can to get what what we need, you know, to get our children on track and and having the best education that they can.
Yeah, I I agree with with everything that has been said so far. And, you know, I'll just point out too, that in addition to our children being behind after losing a year and a half of school. Oh, not school, but being behind in in their academics, which is going to have a huge impact. Impacts that we don't even know yet what that's going to look like. Our children were already struggling academically in the area of reading. Last year, when we went to the finance committee. We presented some pretty startling reading numbers for our kids. And we requested a read, you know, enough money in our budget at that time so that we could add a reading specialist. In fact, I think we've been requesting enough money in our budget to get that reading specialist for several years now. And it's just really disappointing that once again, we're going into another school year. Where we're not going to have those resources for our students. That's just one of several positions that were included in this 2.6% budget. Which I think is a very reasonable increase when you consider all of the contract obligations that we have. That our kids are going to go out, go without again, another another year without a media specialist. I could go on and on. So really disappointing. And yeah, I I agree with with everything that's been said.
I just, I also want to note, just so, you know, the community understands that the town has the funds. So in previous years, going through the budgets, maybe the funds just weren't there to give it to us. However, this year seems to be different. And this is my what, sixth year doing this? So again, I think that, you know, disagreeing with the finance committee. And in trying to get what we need for our students is is definitely worthwhile and 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 needed.
Mrs. Gomes, do you think you could just shed a little light to the community about the work that was done by the the budget subcommittee? That, you know, the budget subcommittee and the school committee on a whole was extremely thoughtful. About putting forth that 2.6% increase. There were already cuts made on our level before we made these recommendations. So I think that would be important for people to understand that this isn't just pie in the sky for the school department. This is what is needed. I mean, imagine a school district that doesn't have one reading specialist. A certified reading specialist to help students learn to read.
When we know we have an issue with reading.
Right.
So just to give a a general summary on what the budget subcommittee, I mean, Craig and myself have done. I mean, we had numerous, maybe six to eight over the course of the of the year. You know, over two hours apiece, dissecting every single department, every single aspect of our entire school budget. Pretty much almost going line item by line item. And there's, there's how many line items in our budget? You know, to make sure that we are thoughtfully, you know, using the funds responsibly. Because we're we're taxpayers as well and and we're parents, you know, to make sure that, you know, we're doing a considerate job. And then, you know, talking to the school committee as a whole and explaining things that are going on. And Mrs. Flynn does an excellent job explaining every detail of what we've discussed and where the funds are going and how they're being used. Again, I think this budget budget was extremely thoughtful. I think it was reasonable. And we know that the town has the funds. And and I think again, you know, like I said, we we need to do what we need to do. And hopefully, we can have the town's support to do it.
And I I I certainly realize that a 2.6% number on the school budget is a is the biggest number that we have. But if you look at it on a percentage basis across what some of the other departments have gotten. It's comparable. It's not an outlier. And and I don't know, I just can't think of a worse time. Where in 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 my mind, where it would make sense to park 350K in reserve funds and let it sit there. When our kids have been at home for over a year, right, struggling to to keep up. And I just personally, you know, as a member of this committee, just have a hard time. Look at myself in the mirror, feeling like I'm doing right by the kids if we weren't to fight for these funds, because I think the kids deserve it.
And we can't have a redo of second grade of sixth grade. You know, kids get one shot at it. So we've got to do everything we can every year. You know, and those grants, it's a Band-Aid. It only lasts, you know, a certain period of time. It's not contributed yet.
You hit on the point, you hit on the point earlier. It's going to be hard to attract and retain educators to come and accept those positions. When they don't know. And I get that the budget's always at risk, but it's a little bit different when you're going to work on a grant.
Yes.
Right? Because you know that that's not necessarily a long term proposition, right? And so even if we get somebody and if they leave after a year or whatever it is, well, that puts us in a hole again, right? Because now we're working, we got to find somebody else if we can even get the funding. And if we don't, we lost all the work that we just did for a year. So.
You know, my my thoughts on it is, this isn't a a question of is is this the right or wrong time to, you know, make budget decisions like this? I I think this is a long term philosophical kind of position that this town, for whatever reason, has taken with education. In terms of, I I think as a town, this is something that needs to be prioritized. And I I just, some of the surrounding towns, some of the surrounding communities, I I just don't understand why Acushnet wouldn't be on the same level or have, you know, the same prioritization as some of these other towns. They've made education a priority. That's that's lifted the entire community. And and it's it's not something that that gets, that's going to happen by osmosis. Like, we're not entitled to in a great, a a great school system. It's it's got to be made and built and and maintained and and continue to push to the excellence. I mean, that's what makes a community attractive to people. That's what draws people in. That creates demand. For people that want to come to Acushnet, live in Acushnet, stay in Acushnet. That's what increases town revenue. Is is, you know, the number one draw is going to be that school system. And and this isn't something that we would look at as as a problem for this year. Okay, this this is going to come to a head at some point where demographically, we're not going to have the same high school tuition levels that we have today. And what's going to happen is we're going to be coming at some point, some meeting in the future. We're going to be coming and asking for a 10 or a 12% increase just to keep everybody here. Or we're going to be making dramatic cuts to people who matter to this, to this, to this school. And and it's, it's, you know, it's a, to me, I've been here long enough to understand that it feels like a revolving door at times. With 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 people, because you you just can't get, you you can't attract and retain talent to Mr. Hood. You know, and 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 you can't, you know, if if the if the educators, if the people in charge are saying, hey, this is what we need. You can't, you can't say, well, well, no, you don't. We understand that's what you want, but you can't, no, 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 this is what we need. And and so what I, my suggestion is, is that we go and, you know, kind of fight for what we need. So that then we could say, well, here, okay, now you've given us everything that we need and here's the results. Here's what we've done with it. But you can't say that, like, it's a, it's a loser's argument. How do you say that? We never got it. Right? So so instead, like, you know, make it a priority through, you know, and say, hey, this is what they're saying they need. Let's give them what they need. And now, like, here's the results. And and that's, to me, that's the philosophy and and the position that this town should take. And and again, it's not one year. This is, this has been, like, this is decades of of that philosophy that that has, you know, turned into a a level budget in the year of a pandemic. So amazing.
And and those test scores, they didn't happen as a result
In a year.
endemic, right? To John, to John's point, that's years of, this is what we've accepted. That really should be unacceptable.
So I think we need to, Kristen, you need a, you need a vote from us this evening to is it to accept the town's? What is the vote that we're looking for this evening or the motion that we need to make this evening as a group?
I would like to make a motion to keep the 2.6% increase of the original budget that we had voted on at the previous meeting. I I don't know, do you say against the finance recommendation? Is there a way, Kelly, that we need to word this?
Well, right, right now, the school committee's voted budget is the 2.6% increase. So I would say, if that's where you want to stay, then you do nothing, right? Because you voted that 2.6% increase, okay? But that doesn't mean it's over, right? As we, you know, discussed, the, I believe, you will have to listen closely on Monday night as to what the recommended budget is on the floor and it'll be listed in our warrant. So if you desire to change it, then you will have to make an affirmative, you'll have to take an affirmative action to do so.
Right, at town meeting, yep.
So basically, if that's going to happen, then we need all the parent support, all the community members that support our school system. To be at that Monday, May 10th meeting, correct?
Yes.
We need the support. And if we don't have the parents and the community members there to support us. You know, then then the kids won't get what they need and and that'll be unfortunate. So we're hoping that every parent shows up, every community member that supports us is there. Because, you know, with us working so hard and diligently on, you know, making this school system a better, a better school system. We need the votes. It all boils down to that.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? All right. Well, thank you for this. Thank you, Kristen, for all the information.
I'm sorry, Ms. Downing, I I had one more question for Dr. Bailey. Is, as far as, as far as salaries for for people who work in district, Paula? As as far as I, where where does Acushnet rank? Is it, is it towards the top or towards the bottom in terms of the the state of Massachusetts? I just wanted to confirm with that.
I have not looked at it in a little while. The last time I did check, it wasn't at the very bottom, but it was towards the bottom.
It's pretty close. Okay. Because I I had recently seen on on a, there was a headline that came across my news feed. And it and it did say the lowest compensated in the state and Acushnet was on that. So even with the budget, we're we're still at some of the lowest salaried employees in in the state of Massachusetts. So I just wanted to point that out.
All right. The town meeting is on May 10th. And I believe it's at, starts at seven o'clock, is that correct? Seven PM, right, when we have all our energy. But please come out anyway, drink some coffee and come out to town meeting. Support the school system. All right. So the next item on our agenda is school committee member report. So just opening it up to any members, if you want to make any comments or reports, updates.
I I have something I want to say that might be unrelated. I don't know if it's the right time. But I just wanted to take a minute and thank Paula, the administration for the for the ceremony that you put on yesterday for Shane. It was really moving. So thank you for that.
Yes, it was so beautiful, well done and very touching. Thank you for all the work and putting that together.
You're welcome. And I do want to just say that the family is extremely appreciative of it. We had originally decided to postpone it since Shane passed away on Friday. Originally, Shane was supposed to attend the event to honor him. And it was unexpected that he passed. And then the family decided that they wanted to have this. And we've just received a lot of comments from the families of gratitude and appreciation. And I think it's helpful to them to to understand how loved this, that Mr. Martin was as a teacher. And the impact that he's had on our community. You know, like I said, his his passing, the post went viral. We probably have, you know, I don't know, the last time I looked, which was a day ago, so it's probably a lot more now. It was like 32,000 views, you know, which is a lot for our small community.
Yeah.
When we only have like over a thousand.
It was really well done. And yeah, I mean, I've heard, I've heard a lot of feedback from people about it as well. So thank you for that.
Within a number of people that were there yesterday, you could certainly tell that people received a lot of healing from being there. And really, really needed to be there yesterday. I think we all walked away feeling a little bit more comforted. So. Yeah, thank you. So just pointing out on our agenda that there are some communications that are in your packets this evening. A number of communications that have gone out recently. We do have executive session tonight. Kelly, can you just confirm, are we returning back to meeting after executive session?
Yes, you'll have to vote in open session.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to make All right. So we will be moving into executive discussion, session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares. And to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So if I can make a motion, please, to adjourn or to, yeah, make most to adjourn the meeting. So that we can move into executive session, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any further? Was that Ron or John?
John.
John, okay.
Oh, Ron, sorry. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll see you in executive session. And if I could please request a motion to open our meeting.
Second.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you. And could we check for, to see if there's any delegations, people in the waiting room, Mr. Oliver?
Sure. There has been no one that has requested access to the meeting as of right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we just have one, uh, final vote to take this evening. And this is regarding the second MOU between the ATA and the school committee. So if I could request a motion, please, to approve the second MOU agreement between the ATA and school committee, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further, well, we can't really discuss. So we can take our roll call vote.
All right. And Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
I will abstain.
Okay. And Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. And I'll just mention that our next school committee meeting will once again be remote. And we will remain remote until we have the blessing of the town to go back to in-person meetings. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June first at five-thirty PM. And one last reminder that our town meeting is on May tenth at seven PM. We'd love to see you there. Thank you, everybody.
Can I just add that the June meeting, I was speaking to Mrs. Benavides about it today, that will probably be our last virtual meeting, hopefully.
Great.
At least on when we have to post the meeting and when hopefully the governor's orders will change. So typically, we don't have a meeting in July, but we'll have to wait and see what we want to do and develop a new calendar. But we're thinking that that hopefully will be our last virtual meeting.
Great. That'll be great. It'll be great back, to be, be back in person.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Oh, you need a motion to end.
Oh. There's been so many motions. I thought we took that one already. Okay.
Two pages worth.
Last one. May I please have a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And, and Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Night.